We are live.
Right now, six point seven.
Public hearings.
Oh.
Oh yeah, what's the date on that?
I think Thursday is the second meeting in October, so it'll be November fifth, I believe.
November fifth, the first meeting.
That would be the seventh.
First Thursday?
First Thursday and, oh wait a minute, no, wait a minute, you might be right, I'm back one. Uh, actually it'd be the ninth, November ninth.
First Thursday?
Oh, first Thursday, second.
Second?
Yeah.
Hey there Josh.
Hey.
How are you?
Good, and you?
Good.
I got your name on the ballot, buddy.
How's everybody surviving here down there in Cincinnati?
Not too bad, they had, they had that, that crud, whatever that is.
Oh, did they?
It's like everybody on campus has, some kind of respiratory cough thing.
Yeah, November the first Thursday.
Aiden hadn't seen it.
Huh?
Aiden hadn't seemed to catch it.
Oh, he hasn't gotten it yet? A bunch of people there have that, Caleb has, Savannah has it, like. Just some kind of sniffle congestion.
Everybody has a memo with.
Bryce or head another Saturday.
Oh yeah? Really?
Sooners.
Okay, yeah, we'll be down there, we have season tickets, so we'll be down there.
I got your name on the, in the paper, beyond the ballot.
I did get the memo before you kept.
They didn't, they didn't have you and I in there.
I saw that, I knew I was.
It's funny how.
Yeah. So I called them and asked them about it, and they said.
I'm alone standing up in the red color.
And talked to them and guys.
Thought it was something.
I said, should've been, should've been there.
Yeah.
Games.
Thanks, sir.
Tonight at eight, or seven. Oh, thank you.
I didn't just make people guess, Rich.
True.
That's true.
When we show up. Show up to the ballot box, right?
Yeah. Results. Is this just minutes, or what is?
Documentation.
That's the only other person I was like.
No, here we go. Everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to London City Council meeting, if you'll please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, could you please take your roll call?
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Robinson? Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
President Comer?
Present. Alright, good to see everyone this evening. Have you had a chance to take a look at the amendments from September seventh meeting? Any changes, corrections? Alright, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Alright, public hearings, we do not have any this evening, and no communications or announcements. Onto our audience concerns, do we have any sign ins for our audience concern, okay. Mr. Norman, please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, Michael W. Norman, is this him?
It is.
Yes.
Yes.
Michael W. Norman, one eighty-eight South Oak Street, here in the great city of London, Ohio. I just have, I thought the round table, at the end of the last meeting, it was brought up that there was a solution to the fire funding, and I'm a little bit confused about the solution that was given. The way it was, that we should consolidate our public safety into one, and I understand that in, I understand that in the, in the long run, that would probably be a solution to a problem, but I don't, I don't think that is a solution to our current problem, because our current problem is an operating problem. So, I, if you could explain.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Maybe I, I, maybe I misunderstood what you're saying.
Yeah, I got you. Uh, first of all, what I mean by that is, if we improve our infrastructure, and that's our fire and our EMS and, and, and police station, that would give us a better facility that people will be proud of to work at. Uh, that could help us in the short term to retain our employees that we are getting, uh, versus our employees that even go to other facilities that may be better, look better, be able to provide, uh, better performance for them. So, you know, it's, it's like you go to work in a place and you work in a really nice place, you feel proud about going there, versus a place that, you know, may need a little bit of work, and you're like, you know what, grass looks green over there, let me go take a look. So I think in the short term, if we're able to provide a better facility, that could be some of the first steps that we have in, uh, getting, you know, more quality, uh, keeping more quality fire, EMS, and police, uh, employees in our city. And like you said, definitely long term, it's definitely gonna be something to, uh, help us out in the long term, especially, uh, in terms of, have you been to our fire facility?
Yeah.
Exactly. Have you been to our police facility?
Yeah.
Exactly, so you see, so you see what I'm saying, I'm saying in the short term and in the long term.
Okay.
And I think it would be a good thing for the city too, and I think, uh, if we have a new, uh, new facilities like that, it, it can help us to attract people when we put in, uh, an ad out there for applications, things like that. And then also, I think if you combine all of those, uh, and I haven't looked a hundred percent into it, that's why I say you might want to take a look into that, if you, uh, include all of those, uh, services in one facility, there may be additional grant funding out there available for, you know, like, for, like first responders versus, you know, just police or just fire or something like that. Uh, and it may even be able to change the whole structure of how you have that, those funds set up, having them in one location, you know, that's something that we would need to explore, if we want to look into that, and that's why I said to start with Springfield, you know, see, hey, how has it benefited you, how does it work? Check with some of these other, uh, places like in Columbus that have the fire, EMS, and police all in lo, one location, say, hey, how does it work for you? Uh, are you able to get more grants that way, are you able to get more funding that way, how does it work? So it's at least something to explore that could help us, uh, in the short term and definitely in the long term, if that's something that, that can work out.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, cause it was a little confusing, cause like, actually you're creating, if you're needing a new facility, you're creating more needs for funds.
Well, but you.
That's how I took it.
But then you would create less need for funds if you get one facility.
Right.
So, so instead of two, you know, two facilities, you build one, and just increase what you have there as far as like locker rooms, just expand them a few, instead of two separate places with two separate locker rooms and.
Right.
You know, two separate places with two separate conference rooms, you can share these things and build one facility, expand it a little bit, so instead of building, you know, two fifteen hundred square foot buildings, or eighteen, or whatever you need to do, you might be able to do a two thousand square foot building that can accommodate everybody, you know, cause the rest are gonna be bays or something like that.
Cool.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I was a little confused and.
Yeah, and, and in my vision, uh, I would see a, underground like a, a, a shooting range too.
Yeah, huge vision.
Hey.
And then the, the other thing is less city, uh, business, but I would like, I'm a London Lions, and I would like to invite those out there who are watching and, and you guys here, we're having our first eyeball, which is, we're gonna kick off the Halloween season on September thirtieth. We're having the eyeball out here at the VFW in West Jeff. Um, we're gonna have a DJ, we're gonna have some food trucks, we got a costume party, uh, we have a, a, it's called Pick a Bone, where you can buy, and, and then of course, all the proceeds from that stay in the community. I think, you know, we do quite a bit here in the community, we've helped with the bridge at the, uh, at the park, uh, we've raised over twenty thousand dollars for Sufficient Grace, so these are things that we do. Um, so this is a pretty good fundraiser for us, and we just want everyone who we can get involved to, to show up, have a good time, it's a good night out, we're gonna have a cash bar, if that's your thing, but, you know, it'd be nice to see some of you there and see what you dress up as.
What's the times?
Uh, it is September thirtieth, and it's from seven to eleven.
Seven to eleven.
Seven PM to eleven PM, and again, it's at the VFW out in West Jeff, um, cause they were nice enough to give us a venue, so we took it. So, that's it, and, uh, have a good evening, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next we have Tommy Boyd. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Alright, Tommy Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street, London, Ohio. Uh, my first one, I really didn't have much for tonight, I was thinking, but just the other night it was brought up, about people in the crosswalks. Uh, they get halfway through and then you see a car just come flying at them. Yeah, I'm thinking that while we want to depend on the knowledge of the people of this city, knowing that, hey, somebody's in that crosswalk, at least start to slow down for them, don't keep accelerating and, you know, make that person run across that street. And so if we could get some of the signs that actually say, by state law, you must yield, you know, within that fifty, hundred feet away from those, I'm hoping that might help. But that's about all I can really see to it right now, because even sixteen, seventeen year olds, you know, they're gonna see a blink and then say, well, I can get there before they cross, you know, and that's what we want to avoid. And if we have to, you know, post up some of our troopers to kind of watch them for a while to help enforce that, we do, but just getting those signs is something I'd like to see if we could get done. Uh, my second one, came from a meeting before this, from the Board of Public Utilities, thirty-second, one of our other citizens, they have a, uh, pond in their backyard, and it, it is a pond, it's between theirs and the neighbors next to theirs. I'm going to make sure that it is tested to see that it is just runoff and not actually sewage, it does have a darker look to it though, which makes me question it. I don't know, Bill, could we get at, I'm sorry, I didn't get an answer on if we did have a test on that water to make sure it wasn't coming from any of our sewage lines, so is that something I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so we'll kind of double check into it still probably, just cause it seems like it's expanded into this individual's yard to, now it's becoming an issue, having to put a fence around it inside his own yard to keep the dogs from playing in it. And so, it's kinda, instead of sitting here saying, well, that's not a, the sewer department, my other question is, which department do I want to go talk to about that, if it is just a water leaking part?
You, you know where that is?
Thirty, thirty-second East Lincoln Avenue?
Thirty, thirty-two East Lincoln, okay.
Lincoln Avenue, yep.
And does it have a, you know if it has a sewage smell or anything to it?
It, it's pretty soggy though, and didn't really feel like playing in it too much yet, but we'll get the sample and kind of get that rolling for them at least, to see kind of what the multiples are, I know I had a leach field at one of the properties that it was kind of getting that same look to it, which is the main reason I want to double check with it. Um.
Bill has something on that.
Oh, Bill?
It is part of the storm sewer system that's happening in the south area, it was part of the CDBG grant, and here you just looked at it the other day.
Okay, so that is supposed to be replaced and is part of the CDBG grant, and it's already been looked at, okay.
And that's, yep, kind of what we talked with last month or last meeting at least, about, yep, getting some of those projects on the run, so.
Okay.
Hopefully that's, yep, one that knocks that one out, but that at least gives that owner an answer, so, thank you very much. Uh, last piece is just kind of from what we were talking about here with combining the fire and police, do they want to be together? I feel that's the main thing, you know, money's nice, but.
Yeah, and, and, you know, like I said, it's something to explore, I didn't say it's something we need to do or that we have to do, and when it comes down to it, it, you know, this person may not like that person or whatever, but we're all the city, so we're all here to work together, no matter whose, uh, egos conflict with each other, we're here to work together, so, you know, it would be a matter of what's best for the city, not what's best for who wants to, you know.
More of personal sleep, you know, the amount of sirens going off, that's the part that I'm more of discussing, I understand there will be conflicts with people at all times, wherever, but if we want to keep our fire safety, you know, on their best, I feel having less alarms going off at all times within that department, you know, is more beneficial.
Well, from what I understand, they, they all seem to go on a lot of the runs together, so all their sirens would be going off at the same time.
Alright, well then, hey.
Just a little research.
Yep, good to check in with them.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, next we have Myron Hoosteller, please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Yes, I'm Myron J. Hoosteller, live at four ninety-eight North Main Street, out close to the, uh, the Merrimont Avenue there. Uh, my concern, I guess, that I brought tonight, I spoke with Bill moments before the, um, the, uh, the meeting here, it sounds like it's taken care of, but I'll go ahead and express my concern so everybody else can hear that as well. The right of way along there where the storm sewer pipe was, was placed, um, still had, does not have any grass growing on top of it, uh, he just reassured me that that's still in the plans for this fall, and, uh, I just, that was my only concern, was, uh, that the project actually does get finished, and, uh, for the rest of the people that are involved, the neighbors, uh, are, were asking me when I'm expecting the grass to be planted, or should we go ahead ourselves, or what steps should be taken with that, but he reassured me that, uh, it's a fall project that they have planned to go ahead with, so. That was my only other concern, I know I'm in construction, and, uh, when I don't finish a job, I normally don't get paid for it. Um, and that was just my concern, to make sure that the loose end doesn't get overlooked with, just because it's grasses, or it may not be grass growing up, maybe weeds that are green, it looks like it's covered, um, that doesn't substitute for what was actually there, and I realize it's the right of way, but, uh, um, I did have some grass growing in that area where the pipe was placed, so, that's my only concern, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Alright, onto our committee reports, we'll begin with Mr. Eads.
Well, we did have a finance meeting. We've covered lots of things, there's gonna be lots of new legislation that we'll discuss in depth, um, when we get to that point here later with the new business.
Okay.
Diddle and Greg, um, with the personnel and finance committee.
Okay, alright, Mr. Hayes?
Uh, yes, attended a BPU meeting tonight, but, uh, I'll give the minutes at the next council meeting, I can't write that fast, and, uh, so Carol took the minutes and she'll have them for us next council meeting. Also, on nine twelve, we had public safety committee meeting, uh, called the meeting, ordered at five PM, all members present, uh, did approval of the minutes from eight, eight twenty-three. Fire and EMS chief's report, Mr. Stahl will give that, uh, I did suggest to, uh, fire chief about having the trucks and personnel out on Saturdays, uh, or different times between now and the election to help with awareness of the fire labby. Also, a chief said that the fire prevention month is in October, and that they will be out to schools and other places. We also discussed personnel hours and hourly pay with Chief Eads, reference, uh, fire department. Next, we had the police chief's report, uh, Mr. Castle gave it in place of the chief, Mr. Hitt will give that report. Uh, safety service director, uh, we have some petitions for alley vacations, uh, that is among the legislation for tonight, uh, Mr. Stahl, and, um, I believe Mr. Hitt will be presenting that. Uh, under new business, um, we talked about the possibility of combining police and fire departments into one building, thoughts and saving money? There were some questions about it, a couple answers, um, and we moved on to old business, none. Uh, under public comments, uh, we had a, uh, person brought up about the poll on Lafayette that had been leaning, and there was another poll, I think this has been taken care of. And we also discussed updates regarding the new police department grant from Representative Carey's office, uh, we have no new updates to report. There's also some discussion on the Boring Company is digging in town for Omni Fiber Cable. Safety Service Director provide an explanation on the process and what would be available for the residents of London when that is completed. Councilman Hitt, uh, talked about planning commission meeting for the development of the apartments on Kenny Boulevard and on Garfield, and I believe those meetings have already taken place, uh, that was this past Thursday, a week ago. I asked about apartments on Kenny Boulevard, if they'll remain, that were, that are not coming in, if that would mean, remain the same zoning, which it will, um, but they would have to follow the same process and start all over again if they were going to come in from scratch. The field behind the Chambers property has been mowed. Person, uh, one of our, one of our, uh, public comments was brought up about marijuana dispensaries in the area, uh, and we have legislation that bans marijuana dispensaries within the city limits. It was asked if that needs to be changed at the legislation, so we could get those tax dollars, of course, it would have to come to council, and council would have to approve it. Uh, we adjourned at five thirty-three, next council, or next public safety meeting will be October the tenth, at five PM, right here in Council Chambers, thank you.
Thank you.
I attended the safety committee meeting, and I'll read through the report that the police chief submitted. They're in the process of hiring officers, there's three positions open, and eligibility list of candidates is expected from Civil Service Commission on the thirteenth. Uh, there continue to be delays in procurement of new cruisers due to equipment supply chain issues. Finance committee has approved, uh, replacement of the cruiser that was totaled in an accident. All of the available cruisers are in service and repaired, uh, this is the first time for several months that they have all, that they're all working. They've completed their annual firearms qualifications and utilized their new handguns, uh, they will switch to those firearms once they receive full allotments of holsters and their duty ammunition. They submitted their annual body armor grant request for approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars to be reimbursed for purchase made this year. Sergeant Joe Cox received the Crisis Intervention Team Officer of the Year Award for Madison County for two thousand twenty-three, uh, he was given this award based on his performance in the past year dealing with crisis intervention calls, and Officer Haddix and Officer Myers completed the forty hours, uh, Crisis Intervention Team training this year. Uh, the drop ceiling in the main office area partially collapsed last Friday night, and was, they're seeking repairs to it, adjustments to the wire, electrical wiring above the ceiling, it's, uh, suspected that the HVAC ductwork came loose and caused, uh, the overload. Several deficiencies were noted and will be addressed, estimated repair is seventy-eight hundred dollars. They're approved for funding for the repair of replacement costs of the damaged Flock's, uh, safety camera system, uh, through its original grant provider. Also noted notable incident that the Flock's safety camera system alerted a stolen vehicle entering the city on State Route thirty-eight. Those people were pursued and, uh, stopped and apprehended, um, so that's something, the Flock's system has been useful to the community in that way, um, that's it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Stahl.
I also attended the finance committee, and as you said, we have legislation to explain most of that. Fire EMS report for activities and events for September, departmental EMS training, traumatic brain injuries with Ohio Health, departmental EMS training, inhalation, inhalation burns, Madison Health, departmental fire training, area lab placement and pump operations, completed several CPR and fire safety classes. They provided stop the bleed training for Chamber Commerce Safety Council, participated in Mandy's daycare touch a truck, participated in Cypress Church event at Callan Park, participated in Madison County Public Health overdose awareness event, that's what I have.
Alright, thank you, going to our city official reports.
Good evening, thanks to everyone for coming out, um, as you guys know, the city administration office is currently taking applications and resumes for the administrative assistant office manager position. You can find the full job description, pay range, and information to apply on our website, londonohio.gov, under current open positions, our Facebook page, London Ohio Government Services, and on ZipRecruiter. We ask that people apply by Friday, September twenty-ninth, so we can start the interviews the first week of October.
Can I apply for that, I'll be looking for a job soon.
Zach, God, I was not ready for that, but, yes, please put your, I'll get you an application.
We can work directly together all day.
That's right, that's right.
The planning commission met on Thursday, September fourteenth, two cases were heard at the commission meeting, the first was for a parcel on the corner of Garfield Avenue and Elm Street behind the current homes in that area. The request was to rezone the parcel from R three to an R four residential area. They were looking to build an apartment complex with sixty-five to ninety-six units. The requ, the request was denied by the commission, the main reason for the denial was due to the current comprehensive plan that designated that area to be an R three district for single family homes. The second case was to rezone about twenty-six and a half acres to a PUD, which is a planned unit development, this area is located on Kenny Boulevard around and behind the current apartment complexes. The plan consists of apartments for rent and townhomes for sale, this plan in conjunction with their other plan to construct double unit condominiums for sale will bring about four hundred and twenty-two door fronts to the community, that application was approved by the commission, so you guys will be seeing that at a committee to come to council. Since the last city council meeting, I've been able to attend some really great events, volunteered at the Farm Science Review with Junior Achievement and the Mass County Chamber of Commerce, um, just want to thank everyone who helps with the Farm Science Review, if you've never been out there, it's quite the undertaking. Um, there's so many volunteers and so many people doing things out there, and it's, it's, uh, such a draw for our community and, and for Madison County as a whole, so, thank you to the Farm Science Review. I helped pass out lemonade to all the students at London Elementary for Lemonade Day, this day is set aside to remember the great Mrs. Daniels and all her contributions to the school and to our community. London Barber Exchange had their ribbon cutting for their new barber shop, uh, Tino Perez is, was the, was the owner of Mug and Brush Barber Shop and has moved into one of Westwood Collective storefronts on South Main Street, and he has now rebranded himself as London Barber Exchange and moved into just an amazing bigger space over there. Finally, I was invited to the Presbyterian daycare to read a story and talk to the kids about my job while answering some questions, so I do want to thank all those entities for letting me take part in their events, as you know, I really, uh, enjoy being out in the public and doing the community outreach and volunteering, so. We have a couple things coming up in October that I want to touch on, first is Trick or Treat, that will be held in the city of London on Tuesday, October thirty-first, from six to eight PM, Trick or Treat, Tuesday, October thirty-first, from six to eight PM. Rain or shine, that's right, rain or shine. Um, there's also a lot of trunk or treats going around, and, uh, last year, uh, people would send me their trunk or treat information, I started putting them on one sheet and kind of putting it out on social media, so, if anybody is having a trunk or treat and wants to send me that information, I'll put them all together, cause it's really amazing how many trunk or treats go on around our community, so. Um, the Madison County Mayor's Committee will once again be having our food drive competition, so all four major communities, London, West Jefferson, Plain City, and Mountain Sterling will be holding a canned and dry food drive from Monday, October sixteenth to Friday, October twentieth. That is in conjunction with World Food Day, so, as we did last year, the community who collects the most food items will have the bragging rights for, for a friendly competition, so you'll be able to donate items, um, at each community's city hall or village hall, um, that week from about eight to four PM. week from about 8:00 to 4:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The food that is collected will stay in that community, so all the food that's collected here will stay in our community and go to the food pantries. If you donate in Plain City, it will go to theirs, so on and so forth. I do want to congratulate London City Schools on all their athletic success. It seems like every time I get on Facebook, something fantastic is going on for, for their athletics. And as you know, the, the football team is undefeated, and they're heading to Old Bell Fountain tomorrow to take on a very strong team led by a Ohio State quarterback recruit, so. And then after that, they'll head home to play that team up north on Friday, September 29th, the old Battle of 42 and, and the Mayor's Cup. So I look forward to that team, for us beating that team for the third time in a row and bringing the Mayor's Cup trophy back to City Hall and having my great friend, Mayor Carney from Plain City, wear her Red Raider shirt to their next City Council meeting. Besides next week's game being a very big one, it's also the Athletic Hall of Fame game, and London City Schools will be inducting five people into their Hall of Fame. I want to congratulate all five inductees on this great accomplishment, but I especially want to congratulate a couple good friends of mine, and one is Miles Nixon, who I grew up with, and then, can't believe he's not here tonight, but Councilman Brian Robinson. So, Councilman Robinson earned many honors for basketball, including being in the top five ever at London in rebounds and field goals. But besides, besides those wonderful honors, I wish he was here, but he was part of an undefeated nine U basketball team in 1996, and, and that's, he gives a lot of credit to those two coaches for pretty much teaching him all his basketball skills, which was myself and his brother Pete Robinson, so congrats to him. And then on to the fun fact, which is two. The City of London is really starting to get some recognition around the state. If you saw, we had a feature article in Business View Magazine, which talked about all the great things that are going on and the future of the city, and just this past week, I was able to complete an interview alongside Westwood Collective and some of their team for Columbus Business First Magazine. So it's really cool that two great articles are coming out that highlight London and shows all the great things that we have been able to accomplish as a team, and definitely the bright future that we have ahead of us. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything, Rex?
Mayor Kevin Musson.
Okay. All right. On to old business for the third reading. Ordinance 199-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 199-23, an ordinance authorizing advertisement for bids for the sale of real property owned by the City of London, Ohio pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 721.03.
So this is an ordinance that will allow the city to put, there's about a one acre swath of land that runs from Kenny. It's abutted by nine houses. It is a county drainage ditch. They'll still retain the responsibility for the drainage there. There was a resident that inquired about purchasing the land behind his house. We didn't want to plat that out, so we have that out for a minimum bid, I believe, of $3,000, so that it will be advertised for a minimum bid of $3,000. The best bid can win that piece of land.
All right.
Tonight is the third reading.
All right. Third reading on that. Anything further on 199-23? Do we need to vote to?
Move to adopt.
Second.
First and second. Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right. On for the second reading, Resolution 201-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 201-23, sponsored by Brian Robinson, a resolution requesting construction loan financing from the Ohio Water Development Authority for the City of London Sludge Press Project for the City of London, Madison County, Ohio, and declare an emergency.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, as a reminder, when Mr. Lulonic from the Board of Public Utilities came to us, he advised this could go three readings. We left it on for that purpose. I'm glad we left it on because I had to, I had to remember a few things that I hadn't remembered at the last meeting. So I handed each one of you the documentation to support what I'm saying here. So, originally, the project was started in 20, in 20, September 7th of '22. Richard Duncan, who is the man in charge at the sanitation or sanitary sewer plant, he came in, this would be page three, came in and told us that it was expected at that point that they would use money from the sewer capacity fund and the sanitary sewer funds, of which they had $819,000 in the sewer capacity fund. They didn't have quite enough to pay the $858,000, so they were going to get the remainder of that from the, just the, from the sewer fund itself. That did go to council September 15th of '22, 179-22. I've left you a copy of that. It shows that the auditors hereby authorized to make an appropriation of $800,000 to improvement sewer and a second part of $68,150, also to improvement sewer. It does not state which funds that these came out of. So at that point, when we discussed this, we weren't going to have to take a loan, they were going to pay for it. So that's what happened then. Then Mr. Lulonic came before the, the Service Committee and asked that we now take a loan for $639,000. The price of the project's actually down some. I believe we've actually already paid some money towards this already, so we would need $639,000, $639,000 and some change. So my question that I was asking myself was, why can't we still pay for this? Why do we need to take a loan? So, Mr. Lulonic pointed out that the sewer fund, which this will be on the last page, just says sanitary sewer fund, that that fund's down over $600,000. However, he didn't mention the sewer capacity fund, so he wanted to get a loan because they're down $600,000, and at that point, he stated, he thought the majority of that loss was due to the prison, not having as many prisoners, we weren't collecting as much money. However, if Mr. Duncan stated we were going to use sewer capacity for the majority of the money, that's on the next to the last page. That fund has grown from $819,000 last year to 1.1 million, 165,000. There's enough money in that fund that they were originally going to use that we don't need to take a loan. We can pay for it out of the sewer capacity fund as it was originally thought, and we would still have half a million dollars in that fund. In the notes from the finance meeting, which was again back on page three, he just mentioned that fund had not been used in 12 years. So this is a fund that's not highly used. I do believe the reason why that fund has more, and others can speak on this, why that, the sewer capacity fund has grown by so much is because of tap-in fees, I believe. Where last year, there was $38,000 put in at this time, last year, at the end of August last year. This year, it's $339,000. So I know that we're going to have another reading. Tonight's not the final reading. I wanted to give everybody my documentation so that you can ask your questions of the Board of Public Utilities, or the auditor, or the administration, or whoever, before we make a final decision. I'm just telling you, I feel that we have enough money in that fund. We don't need to extend ourselves, even for a zero interest loan, we don't need to do it.
All right, we have this documentation here in front of us. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Eads for his research in this, because this is very well-documented legislation that shows this activity, and it also mentions possibly using that fund in the past to cover expenses, and now he said that that fund actually has more money now than it had when they were going to use that previously, so I know this is a lot here, so I would say this definitely, you know, and floor's still open for others to make comments, but I would say this definitely needs to go back to the committee for further discussion to see if we can use those funds that we already have for that instead of increasing the debt load for the city. Do you have any comments, Rex?
I'd like to have Councilman Eads forward us his document that he talked about, and then we will get with the auditor and research that. I will make one comment, though. At the BPU meeting, this was also brought up, and BPU member Steve Lulonic said that, you know, things change, you know, your planning, he said, we, he'd have to research it, but he's feeling that we won't need all that money for the loan, just as what originally was planned, because finances are coming in, so.
Okay.
We will have to research it further, get the appropriate answers.
I, I do have copies for you, I just didn't think to take them down to you before the meeting.
Okay.
All right. Anything further, Councilman? Okay, thank you again. So that will go back to the Finance Committee for further discussion. Thank you.
Well, are you going to leave it on? I mean, we can leave it on.
Yeah.
We probably won't have the finance meeting until after the next meeting, so.
Yeah, we want to leave that on, because this is, this is very important to research this, because, like I said, if we can use funds that are already there instead of increasing the debt load for the city, I think that would be a plus. Even, you know, above a zero interest loan, you know, it's still a loan, so you're still increasing debt load, even if it's 600,000, and what Mr. Castle said, that maybe, we may not even need all those funds. So it could be even less that we actually borrow out of the dollars we already have, so.
But, and one, one other question that I kind of, kind of pointed out, though. 179-22, if this money was already appropriated, and there's, like I said, there's a copy of that, if this money was already appropriated and it hasn't been spent, where'd that money go? Why haven't we spent it? It's, the money's been set aside and appropriated at some point.
Well, that was done in '22. This is '23, so the '23 budget would have encompassed that, and it would have been there in as a budget line. I'm sure there's a lot of emergency-type sewage projects that has been done in 2023 and has used up quite substantially the amount of that money. So, that, you want to ask where it went, that's where it went. It would have been incorporated in the budget for this year, and I think in BPU meeting, we rattled off at least three pretty substantial projects that's been done this year that wasn't anticipated, so.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
That does give us quite a, quite a bit of time to research that further, so thank you again. All right, and then we will leave that on. So on to our new business. We have quite a bit here. Resolution 203-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, first and second. Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 203-23, sponsored by John Stahl, resolution increasing appropriations.
The police department received a donation, and they did, put it in their budget that way. I forget what they said it was for, from. Was that?
Cronk and Scag.
Cronk and Scag, yeah, there it is, yeah.
Oh, okay. So what are our wishes here?
There is no emergency clause, that doesn't mean you can't suspend anyone.
That's right.
I make a motion, we suspend three reading rule on it.
Second.
First and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, move to adopt.
Before you go there, I'm sorry, who first and seconded that suspension?
The first was Rich, and the second was John, right? That's usually how it goes.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure.
I don't think they broke from that.
Motion to adopt?
I'll stick it.
Okay, go ahead.
Who's got the motion?
He had the motion.
Oh, so John had the motion, and it has a second. All right, clerk, please take the roll call and adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right. One, two, Resolution 204-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 204-23, sponsored by John Stahl, a resolution increasing appropriations.
The paving of Sheffield and Oxley being completed, and I think the one, that was the one, the bid was too high, they redid it. Is, is that the right one? No, am I the wrong one?
This is, the paving project on Sheffield and Oxley has been completed, and the available funds must be appropriated prior to expenditure.
That one came in on, on point as far as the, the bid amount. That one was correct. The only thing that happened was that, is the bid opening was after a council meeting. I asked the gentleman when they anticipated doing the project. He said it probably wouldn't be till October, and an opening came up, and they went ahead and did it before I could even get it to finance. So we had to use that money out of Bill's budget, and we're trying to put the money back for that project.
And he's already done the work. There is an emergency clause, so we can get the man paid.
All right.
I make a motion to bypass three reading rule.
Second.
All right, first and second. Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, move to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 205-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 205-23, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So, if you all remember, we've had a few accidents with our cruisers. They were, neither one were at fault. The big one happened right around July 1st or 2nd. That totaled the vehicle. Nobody was permanently injured. The officer was injured, she came back to work. However, that means we have, we're a cruiser, another cruiser down. We have two on order. We, I don't know that we've received them yet. I know that they were, I think they were there, but they were still trying to outfit the cruisers. At finance, we discussed that we should go ahead and replace this cruiser since it is totaled, it is gone, it wasn't part of the rotation. We did receive around $39,000 from the insurance payment on this. It was a used cruiser, so initially was only going to be about $26,000, but they went back and said, hey, we outfitted this cruiser, there's a cost to that. So they bumped the price up to $39,000. If we appropriate this money, then he will be, if he can find a cruiser to order, he can do that, and the $39,000, which was awarded or given to the city in payment for the cruiser, will then be used to pay down the debt. So our net on this would be roughly $26,000 to buy a cruiser.
All right.
There is an emergency clause on that, so that he can, so the police chief can try to find a cruiser and order it if necessary.
Well, since it's police department, I'd make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
All right, first and second to suspend. Let's take a roll call. Clerk, please take a roll call.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
And I wish them all the best in luck in finding the cruiser and actually getting it delivered. All right, Resolution 206-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 206-23, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, this is for the parking lot here at City Hall that needs paving, I think, from the, from the damages from doing that, or taking down the community center and the old high school, middle school, and that's for $49,280.
Okay, now is that going to repave the whole parking lot?
No.
Okay.
It's going to basically do repairs of where the damage was done. We put that out to bid. The bid came in substantially higher than what we anticipated, which would have been putting asphalt where the old boiler room was. Price of gravel has escalated because of all the construction in Columbus, so that raised the price. So what we're going to do is just try to repair what's needed to be repaired, fill where the old gas house was, fill that in so that that's a nice straight area coming So what we're going to do is just try to repair what's needed to be repaired, fill where the old gas house was, fill that in so that that's a nice straight area coming in the, and leaving the parking lot, and then seal all of the parking area, the, back behind the building and then the employees' parking lot. So we're not going to be able to do everything, but try to get it looking halfway decent again.
Is there any, is there going to be anything done like there on Lafayette Street there, like by Lowe's on forty-two Lafayette Street where it's pretty bad? We're going to try to patch that up before winter time at all? Because it's, I mean, there's, there's quite a few sections between Walmart and Lowe's that probably need to be patched probably before winter time.
Yeah, there's some, there's some rough areas in there.
I mean, I hate to, if we're going to spend fifty thousand here, I think we need to get that fixed before we fix our parking lot, in my opinion.
That's, that's probably, I'm not going to doubt that, but if we don't do something out here, it's going to be real expensive because our.
But it's also going to be real expensive on forty, on Lafayette Street, too. I mean, but more of the public uses Lafayette Street compared to our parking, our parking lot at Price City. Right, that's what, I'd rather. I think that's something we need to look into. Yeah, I mean, I think that's something we need to look, look into before winter hits.
Mr. President, on this, just to add a little more, that Mr. Castle told us at the Finance meeting, the original pact that we put out, I think, was for eighty-eight thousand is what we expected to spend, but it came in, the bid came in at a hundred and seventeen. So the original scope of the work is now being brought back so that it's within this budget.
Okay. All right, so what are our wishes here? Want to leave this on or?
I mean, we're getting close to.
Getting close to winter.
We're getting close to everything.
We gotta get these projects done.
Right. So what are our wishes here? We want to get this done and then include looking into the lot from Lafayette from Lowe's all the way up to Walmart, too?
I mean, just the few sections that are pretty bad.
Okay, so we want to definitely get this done, too, and include that, get that looked at. All right. So what, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right. One, two, Resolution two zero seven two-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution two oh seven dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So if you'll remember, we did enter into contract with Mid-Ohio Water and Sewer District to oversee the operations of the water, anyway, along with Mr. Long. So they're helping out. There was a cost to that. The cost was around ninety-seven thousand dollars a year. We cannot use payroll because they're not, this is a contract. They're not employees, so they're not payroll. So we need to pay for them for the remainder of the year and then they'll be in the budget for next year. Is that pretty much correct, Mr. Long? Thank you.
All right. And that makes sense since they're not employees, but they still need paid some way. All right, what are our wishes here? Does have an emergency clause.
I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right, on to Resolution two zero eight two-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution two oh eight dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So the cost of everythings went up. That's what everybody says. And one of those costs is the chemicals to treat our water. So we're not going to have enough money to, to continue to pay for our chemicals for the rest of the year. So it was brought to account, our finance, that we would increase that by fifty thousand dollars to get us through the remainder of the year to pay for our chemicals to treat the water. There is an emergency measure on this also.
You say fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Get us to the end of the year.
To the end of the year. We've got to have water. You've got to treat the water. So I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
I'll second it.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Resolution two zero nine two-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution two zero nine dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So I have Mr., I asked Mr. Long to step up here. He can explain a little further. This is for some repairs at the water plant that need to be done. I don't remember all of the repairs. That's why I'm asking him up here so he could just tell us. He did state that over time, things have deteriorated. They need to be fixed. And this is also, I believe, going to help with our efficiency.
So this is the hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
So basement wall was one of our repairs. General operations, so we can have money to finish out the year. Because we bought materials that we didn't have a supply of before. We have some supplies now. And supply and demand, prices, things have just skyrocketed, guys. Some valves that we were paying, you know, just a few dollars for, you know, not too long ago. We're looking at a hundred, a couple hundred dollars a pop now. Coppers outrageous. We've had a lot of repairs, bans, multitude of different things. But we just need to increase the budget to cover everything for the rest of the year.
And I don't remember what the number was. There's plenty of money in the, the line to pay for this. We just need to appropriate.
Coming out of our general rainy day fund, as you want to call it, I guess.
For the water, for the, under the waters.
Department, yes.
So we're just appropriating from the water fund to, so they can spend it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a hundred thousand, correct, to the end of the year?
Well, that hundred thousand dollars now, they might have some carryover, you know? Maybe they don't spend it all, but.
Okay.
Right.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading and rule on it.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first, second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Resolution two ten twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution two ten dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this is to purchase additional water meters. As it was explained, I believe, we're building more houses. We don't have enough meters. We need to get those in stock so that we can get those on those, not just the new houses, but the replacing throughout the city. So we'd need to replenish that supply of the, the newer water meters.
All right.
It's also well within their budget. I believe they have the money. We just need to appropriate.
All right.
There is an emergency clause on this.
I'll make the motion to suspend three reading rule on it.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right. Resolution two eleven twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution two one one dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl, a resolution increasing appropriations.
This is appropriate money to clean up demolished property one thirty-eight mound after the structure was on fire. I think it's twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. Are there any, like, reimbursements?
So, so, yeah, that's what I was going to talk about. So we'll pay the twenty-five and take it down and then we will bill them, whoever the property owner is. If they do not pay that bill, we will then assess the taxes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on it.
Second.
All right, first and second for suspension. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
One, two, Ordinance two twelve twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
I'll make a motion to read by title and number.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance two one two dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Head and Ordinance Vacating an Alley.
So this is an alley that runs behind one oh nine Canterbury Drive. The budding property owners have all signed the petition. As far as util, or access to the easement. The Water Department has no issues with vacating the alley. The Street Department wants to reserve easement rights to that area. That's for storm sewer needs. The Sewer Department has no issues with vacating the alley. And Ohio Edison, they have no facilities within the alley, so they have no issues with vacating that alley.
You said the Sewer Department does have an issue or does not?
The Street Department wanted to remain or continue to have easement rights.
Okay, okay. All right, and then I see that we've received the letter signed by all of the neighbors there?
Yeah, and then also the sanitation has no issues with vacating the alley.
All right. And this is set for a public hearing November second?
Yes, I believe that's.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So when we're looking at this map, I'm just curious because, I mean, to the north of that or just above it on the map, you can see where, like, they built into that. Then it looks like that alley would have extended beyond that point. And then south of it, I just wondered, did that alley extend south of that? Is there still an alley there or is that already been vacated that we know of?
Yeah, so the way Jennifer explained this to me, the law director, was, so that's, this is a section behind Canterbury. And for some reason, all the areas of that alley were vacated except for that section kind of in the middle. And she didn't know why. I don't know why.
I think when, a long time ago, when George Matheson owned that property, he had access through that alley to get back to that property.
There you go.
So this will just vacate it like all of the other property around it, just that one section now? Okay. All right, and that is set for a public hearing November second? All right, on to Ordinance two one three twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
I'll make a motion to read by title and number.
Second.
All right, first and second. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance two one three dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Head and Ordinance Vacating an Alley.
Okay, this is the.
Tolan Street.
What was that?
Tolan Street.
Oh, yeah, Tolan Street between, I think it's two thirteen and two fifteen. Tolan Street.
Two eleven and two thirteen.
Two eleven, two thirteen. The petitions have all been signed. Don't believe there were any issues with vacating that area. Make sure.
Yeah, no objections.
Mr. Long's raising his hand back there.
Yes, Mr. Long? Yeah, it says, yeah, reserves the easement rights on the, of vacation.
Okay, yep.
Yep.
And sanitation had no issues. Sewer's not in here, but they submitted a form to the law director and I don't think they had any issue with that being vacated either.
All right, and then that is also set for a public hearing on November second.
And, and again, on this one, when we look at the picture, if, if the rest of that is still an alley, we've cut off the end of it to Tolan. That's the one closest to Tolan. But if we go, I guess, to the southwest of that point, behind those houses, is that still an alley? Do we know? I don't know where that would go. Based on this picture, I don't know how far back that would go. But the way the land, the property lines are shown here, there's a possibility you would have a piece back there that you couldn't access anymore if we close off the, the end of it.
It was reported that the alley that you're talking, I think what you're talking about is growed over and there's, you can't get through it anyway.
Well, that doesn't matter. Would we not have to vacate it? I mean, it would still be a public alley if part of it's grown over unless we vacate that and give it to property owners, right?
Yeah, but they've not requested.
Yeah, they'd have to request it.
They haven't requested it. We're only going to vacate what's been requested.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm assuming that they're asking to have it vacated and the justification behind it is nobody can get through there anyway. So why have it designated as an alley? So they requested.
Right, and then the other property owners on that piece will need to request to have that vacated as well.
If they want to take ownership of the property, yes.
Right.
I, I, I just wonder why we don't do the whole alley.
Has to be requested. Yeah, we can't. The, the owners here have to request to have it vacated. Yeah, because somebody has to take, their property taxes will go up. We could do it, but they may not be too happy about that since they didn't request it.
Well, if it's still, if it's still an alley, maybe they can, maybe we can prompt them and realize, let them realize, hey, that piece is gone. You guys can vacate this just as easily.
And, and increase the size of your yard a little, too.
A little bit, yeah.
All right, and that is set for a public hearing November second. All right, on to round table. We'll begin with Mr. Hayes.
Oh, thank you. You surprised me there. I want to thank all the city employees for jobs well done. I know Water Department, Bill's been just going crazy here with some of the things that are going on. Great job. Appreciate your efforts. Appreciate everybody's work. Fire Department, Police Department, God knows where we'd be without them. I want to say something to the people that are listening. You need to pass this fire levy this coming November. We need to have that service. I know they come into where I live, you know, six, seven times a day. They're picking up people. They're transporting people. We have a lot of sick people in there. And God only knows what would happen if we didn't have them. So, you know, think with your heart a little bit and not with your pocketbook. It's not that much. And if you're not working, you're on a pension, you're not going to pay for it anyway. So we got to pass that. So I'm going to ask everybody to please vote yes on that fire levy. I want to thank all my committee members. Without you guys, you make it so much easier. I want to thank council. A lot of work tonight. Guys did a great job moving the city along. I'm really happy with the way things are going. It's just incredible for some of the things that are going to be coming. We have a new ice cream place coming in. I've read. They still serve milk in the bottles. I'm anxious to see that. So, and support, support your local business. I'm anxious to see that. So and support support your local businesses. And I know it's easy to run to Home Depot and so on and so forth, but support your local businesses here in town. Take care of these people. I just ask God's blessing upon our city and our citizens, and I thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hitt?
Yeah, I just like to thank everyone who's here showing an interest in the city. And the next safety committee meeting is October tenth, five o'clock in the meeting room next door.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stahl.
I think it's Saturday downtown. The a new little restaurant, a sandwich shop's going to be opening up, and a new beauty shop's having an open house, so we need to go try to just see that. And I went and saw the barber shop last week and all that, and it's really nice. It's that and the town looks so different. And I talked to that one gentleman. He's a wonderful guy to speak to. And I know somebody said about the ice cream place coming in. Well, every time something good happens, he raises the price on it. But I said, but this gentleman owns a building, and he wants people in there, but he's the one that has a franchise. You're going to have them all over central Ohio, these ice cream shops. So I think it's going to make it good. And I also just want to mention the the mayor mentioned the high school, but the eighth grade boys are doing great this year. They're undefeated, unscored upon. As soon as I get out of here, I'll get to see the second half tonight.
That's all.
Mr. Peters?
Going off John Stahl's, the eighth grade boys are playing right now, and I'd like to get there as soon as I can because my boy's playing, and my daughter's actually playing tennis match as well, so.
All right.
If we wrap this up, that'd be great.
I'm very glad to see a couple of new faces tonight. I'm also glad that you stayed for the entire meeting. I know it can be very boring, but there's a lot of information that passes on. I'm going to agree with Mr. Hayes very quickly. The fire levy is something we I think we really do need to pass. If you're just listening now for the first time, here's some maybe some new information. This is not a permanent levy at this point. We did change it, so it will be on for a seven-year term. If it's still needed after that seven years, then we'll have to vote on it again. If it's not needed, we can let it go. It is only on earned income. I had someone talk to me today that was so upset about everything that's happening, not just the levy, and when he realized he wasn't paying because he's retired, he was a little a little happier about it, but he's still concerned about everything else. And something I would like this council to consider, and the administration has to work with us on this, we show up at these meetings, and we're given documents, and that's nice, and we have these tables that we sit at. We have no place that we can sit down and talk to someone unless they're going to come to your house or your business. I would really like to see council have its own room. I think there's a room that's available. Probably it's being used, but I think it would be better purpose for council to have its own room that we can sit and talk to people if we need to. They're not going to feel uncomfortable coming up here probably. And if our clerk needs a workspace, she would have a workspace, too. She has none in this building. And I think we should strongly consider trying to get the room across the hall, maybe, or a room here that we as council can use that and actually have a place they can drop our mail and do other things. Just want to consider that as we move forward.
All right, and I do agree because a lot of city councils in a lot of cities do have their own space. They don't just meet during council time. There's different functions that go on that they need to speak with the public or speak with media, things like that, and it would be nice for a city council to have their own place in city council chambers in city hall, which makes a hundred percent sense to me. I'm, you know, I'm glad that they finally were able to get a key for city council to get into their own chambers. And it's it's pretty interesting because the keys, they only work for a certain time. They only work basically a little bit before council meetings, and after council meetings, they turn off. So if you need to get something done, if you need to come and get something done, pick up paperwork or something, you can't get in. You have to go around some other way. So, you know.
Come here in business hours.
Yeah, I just think that it would be good if, you know, city council were given some respect as to the scope of the work that they need to do and that they actually do for the city and be able to have access to the things that they need to have access to, whether it's copying information or downloading information, something like that, meeting with people. I think that is very important. And as we move forward, that city council does have the respect to have its own place and keys that work longer than just council meeting times. All right, and again, I like to thank everyone for coming out to our council meetings in, like Mr. Hayes said, you know, thankful for all the councilmen here. We get a lot of things done. We've gotten a lot of things done, you know, in this in this council session. Thanks for for that, and all the progress is being made in the city. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Josh made it.
Josh made it before I spoke.
Nice to meet you.
Oh, tomorrow night, yeah, I'm I'll be on the radio. Yeah. Uh, I don't know. I'm Sean E. Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we should be inside the stadium up there.
Eighth grade?
All right, be careful. See, but hey, thank you. Appreciate you. I took a good man.
Hey, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I tried to do that for four years.
I know, I tried.
You guys make it, you know, pretty easy, so. We've done a lot of stuff done, I'm telling you what. So much now they're talking about this in magazines.
Yeah.
It's like, what's happening out there? Yeah, it's like, we're rocking, that's what happened.
Yeah, it used to be a little